...in a school committee meeting for June 16th. I would start with a rise from pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So as we get settled in, just a reminder that this evening's meeting is being recorded, although at this point we are having some technical difficulties. So if you are looking or watching at home, we do expect to have those problems resolved fairly quickly. And also a reminder that if you please put your mobile devices on silent mode, that would be great. We're going to start this evening with public comment. We have quite a large public this evening. What I'm going to try to do is keep the public comment to our agenda so that we have a period of time to hear your input and what you have to say. Just a reminder that public comment is an opportunity for you to provide insights and input into the -- Appreciate if you could forward it or at least address it to me as the chair. And then lastly, if you would please just come to the microphone when you would like to speak, introduce yourself, and if you could give your address, that would be fabulous. And under our policies, we would like to hear from town residents ahead of non-residents if we can. So with that, it'll open up to a public comment if you have something you'd like to share with us.
My name is Kim Mulroney. I live at 80 Holly Ridge Road. And obviously, as you know, I'm here with a group of parents and students to speak in support of Alyssa Knox, the French teacher at the high school. The students found out last week that she was being let go and not coming back to high school. And I have to say that the, other than just being extremely sad about that, that the strongest emotion that I think they were feeling was just bewilderment because she is a teacher that is very special. And I heard them say, "She's one of the best teachers we've ever had. Why isn't she being brought back?" When I reached out to parents, I heard the same thing. She's one of the best teachers our children have ever had. One parent said that her child hated French before they had Miss Madame Knox, and now they love it. Another said that her son didn't want to continue taking French because she wasn't going to be teaching it anymore. And one parent whose son has Asperger's said that she is one of the few teachers who's really been able to connect with him and to, you know, discern his learning style. And under her teaching, he flourished and got As and Bs in the class that he's never been able to before. And that's the kind of teacher we want in our school. That's the kind of teacher we want, teaching our children, someone who can connect with them and just really appreciate their differences and help them to flourish and grow. And I am also bewildered as to why she's not being awarded professional teacher status because it seems to me that if anyone deserves that status, she is a teacher who does. I believe other people, at least one student, is also going to speak, but I just wanted to read a few quotes that I found. These came in connection with the situation with Coach Rafferty a few years ago. And former school committee member Christine Allen told Coach Rafferty's supporters that while closure on the issue was not going to happen that night, comments from citizens can influence us. And Dr. Scuzzarella said that the important message to students was that adults are listening to them. When they put themselves out there, they can make a difference. That's not just about football. And also, Dr. Scuzzarella said that she felt that there were two lessons to be learned from the events. First, never be afraid to reexamine a decision. And she said she hopes that students will learn that adults are not always the enemy. They do listen. And I really hope that students don't come away from this thinking that those things only apply to football. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Anna Magaletta, and I live at 61 Carlton Lane. In the interest of brevity and so that we don't have dozens of students coming up and repeating the same thing about what an amazing woman and influence Ms. Knox is, I'm going to sort of summarize a lot of what we all have to say and speak on behalf of them. In school, we are often taught that no matter the odds or the opposition, we should always stand up for what we know is right. With this in mind, as I prepare to leave the North Andover School District, I cannot sit by without speaking to you. That's why the decision to terminate Ms. Alyssa Knox is unequivocally wrong for the school and for the school district. Dr. Price, in your speech at graduation, you spoke from the heart about leaving places better than you found them. Unfortunately, where this decision to stand, I think all of us know that you would be, after the first year, leaving North Andover High School, a significantly worse place than you found it for many students throughout the French department. What else is sad about this is that after many years of service and dedication to her students, the legacy that Dr. Scuzzarella would leave is that she took away a teacher that meant so much to so many after being here for so little time. I wrote to the principal and superintendent ad nauseam, as did many other students, as to why Ms. Knox has proven herself to be the single best teacher in North Andover High School. To me, the single best teacher I had during the 13 years of education throughout my entire life. And I don't want to come up here and just repeat everything I said, although I and many of the other students would be happy to supply copies of our letter were that to be of interest. What is important to stress is not just the impact that Ms. Knox had on me or how much she affected me, great as it was. What is important is that she affected strongly every single student she encountered. She is not just a teacher. We would not be here if she was. I know I, for one, would be out enjoying my summer vacation. Finals are coming up, and I think other students would be busy preparing for those. But for the past three years, for the hundred or so students that Ms. Knox taught, she was really not just a teacher. She was truly an inspiration. She instilled a love of French culture and French language in so many students who never thought in a million years they would be interested in the subject. And I consider myself one of those people without a doubt. That she instills a love of French in her students that is beyond what anyone could have expected can be seen by the growth of our NAHS French Club. As you can see, we are representing some of us today. That club was started by me and four other seniors. We were sophomores at the time. We had been so moved by the classes that Ms. Knox taught and become so interested in the subject that we thought that maybe we could share that with the school community. Because of the classes that Ms. Knox taught and because of how many students she inspired, that club now includes well over 20 students, including freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and will continue on next year even though all of its founders are now graduated from North Andover High School. The students love her not because she's easy or because she's a nice person, but because she engages them and cares for them, not just as a learner or as a test score, but as a whole individual. There is no one who could have been a better fit for the French department if we're North Andover High School than Ms. Knox. Back in 2013, in discussing her decision to reinstate Coach John Rafferty less than one week after his termination, Dr. Scuzzarella said, "Over the six years I have been principal, parents at NAHS know that I strive to base my decisions on what I believe is best for my students. Nothing matters more to me than my students." She then went on to discuss how these student athletes approached her in a sincere, respectful manner that, quote, "compelled her to spend additional time on the matter." What is increasingly frustrating for so many students is that we are talking and talking, and what is increasingly apparent is that no one is listening. We are being heard and promptly ignored, and a teacher who has meant so much to so many is being taken away and bewilders all of us, I think is a good word, because there's simply no reason, no good reason, why a school district would want to take away a teacher who has this kind of impact on her students. It is simply put that the idea that this is in the best interest of students could not be further from the truth. It is not enough to listen to our thoughts and ignore us. We really implore you to reconsider this decision, truly listen to what we have to say, and I'm sure that if you talk to any of us individually, we'll tell you all of the reasons why Ms. Knox has truly been a life-changing teacher. I'm a different and better student and person because I had Ms. Knox in the classroom. Tonight, I'm using the lessons that this school district taught me over the past few years and standing up for what I and so many others know is right. You should keep Ms. Knox because the students value her and she values her students. You should keep Ms. Knox because she changes lives in the ways that she teaches in the classroom, mine included. You should keep Ms. Knox because that is what is truly in the best interest of students, and you should keep Ms. Knox because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? Very well put, and I do appreciate the collaboration across the other folks.
My name's Helen Picard. I live at 447 Waverly Road. I don't have a student in French class, and I don't know Ms. Knox, but I do have a concern that I wonder about the policies and practices around losing teachers in the first three years of their work here with us, and wonder if that's a pattern that happens in North Andover, and if it is, if it's an intentional pattern or an unintentional pattern, and if it's intentional, if it is a cost-saving measure to keep low step and track levels available. So I would just ask you to look at that as you look at the big picture of our North Andover schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Can I just quickly say, I met with a number of the students who are in the audience yesterday and had, I thought, a good conversation. They asked some incredible questions. And I have to say, throughout this entire process, I have been very proud of how respectful and thoughtful and committed and passionate and incredibly fantastic writers you all are with your emails. I think the North Andover Public Schools is doing an incredible job if you represent us, and you do represent us. So there is a binder right there that Anna has of different letters that I think you should just put right there so that the school committee can look at it if it's okay with you. And, you know, I truly enjoyed meeting and talking and emailing with so many of you as a superintendent. One of the challenges is you're so far removed from students. So regardless of how this turns out, I just want to say I've enjoyed and been really, really impressed with how you've handled this situation. So I think that's important that you hear from me. And I know it's hard, and I know it's difficult, and I know that it feels confusing and bewildering, and all of those things, I understand, are very real. And at the same time, I think you've handled this incredibly well and represented our schools and our town incredibly well. I just want to say that to you.
Thank you. Thank you. What I'd like to do is close public comment and ask if there's any school committee comment on what we've heard at this time.
I just, I mean, I always think it's very impressive when students come, and, you know, as impressive as you all are, you know how well you spoke in the letters and the emails, so, you know, I want to thank you as well. I mean, I think it takes a lot of courage to stand up for something that you believe in, and I truly do thank you.
Mr. Treasi. And finally, I just also want to thank you for doing what you have done in a very respectful and thoughtful way. Channeling Ms. Allen, it's unlikely that we'll have a closure to this this evening, but I do want to make it clear that I do appreciate your thoughts, do appreciate the emails, and I thank you for bringing this to us tonight. We will also have opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting if anyone wants to wait that long, but I'd like to move on to the rest of the agenda if that will be okay.
And we just do want to be clear that if you get up and leave now, it's not disrespectful in any way.
Part of the open door.
Right, Mr. Wolfenden?
Do it all the time.
Yeah, he does it every school committee meeting, so, just so you know.
Very good. So our agenda does not appear to have any recognition, so I will jump right over to that, our student report.
Our graduated student report.
Oh, yeah.
Alumni report.
Have you ever had an alumni report?
An alumni report.
Send the precedent. Well, what better way to end the year than, or whole career in the public school system here in North Andover was with the senior week that we had. It was phenomenal. We had great weather for all of our events. We had a clam bake, had a backyard barbecue. We went to Linfield Market.
Bowling.
In bowling. That was a big one. All the great activities. We just like to thank, being one student to another, I want to thank everyone else for making it great and memorable. So that's pretty much it. We have, the rest of the students in North Andover only have, what, four more days? So, less than that, so.
I can tell you, if you turn around, someone will give you the exact hours.
Yes. I bet. I bet you the teachers are down with it, too. They want to be.
Everyone's pretty happy I didn't call some of those snow days at this point.
Oh, definitely. Well, for me, I don't have to make them up, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
To the other schools of this week.
Very good. One thing that unfortunately the prior meeting weren't here, so I did want to just pass on a small token of thank you from the school committee for the work you've done this year and wish you good fortune. Appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes and acceptance of, please.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have meeting minutes for May 10th as well as May 26th in the packet. I think we can.
The links aren't there? No. Okay.
Well, I think we can take these together unless anyone has a difference of opinion. Hearing none, entertain a motion to accept meeting minutes as presented for May 10 and May 26 as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so discussion, corrections, any changes or?
No.
We're good?
I'm fine with this.
Okay, so all favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no abstentions. Moving on to our donation.
Seven B.
Yeah, so this is listed as seven B on the face sheet, it's actually eight B in the packet. Good evening.
Good evening. So we are really excited about this donation. This comes from a family at Kittredge, and you can see Anita Warden and James Warden. They have made the decision to support foundations and the foundations program for all 16 first grades across the district. It's an incredibly generous donation, and I asked our two reading coaches to come and just talk about the impact of this donation on the North Andover Public Schools. So if you guys would introduce yourselves.
Sure. So I've met a lot of you, but, yes, Jaclyn Taylor, just to remind.
And I'm Ann Joyce.
And over the past year and a half, we have had the privilege to be able to work with a lot of the students within the district who are struggling to read, and as well as support some of those teachers as well who are working with those students. And it has been such an amazing experience, and we were looking forward to being able to roll out kindergarten foundations for next year. And then we had plans to be able to do that in first grade and second grade in the subsequent years, but now, thanks to this donation, we're going to be able to also jump into first grade next year. So we're very, very excited about that.
It is, it's fabulous. We're thrilled about this donation, and I'm thrilled about it in many ways, not only as a reading teacher, but I'm also a parent who has two sons who struggle to read. Both of them were exposed to foundations, and I'm very happy to say that they're now successful readers. And I truly believe that it was due to foundations, the clear, consistent rules, the systematic, explicit instruction is what really gave them the foundation that they needed in order to become successful readers. And foundations is just, it's a fabulous program. It's a multi-sensory program that teaches the rules of our language in a multi, in an explicit and systematic way. So kids understand why words are the way they are. They understand the sounds of the language and why different letter sounds make the sounds that they do. And this instruction is fabulous because it happens at the tier-one level, which is the whole class gets the instruction, and then it's set up so that for students who are struggling, they can get a second dose, or they can get that instruction again in a smaller group setting. And we find that that second dose really makes all the difference for our struggling readers. So we're really, we're thrilled to have this curriculum for K-1, and we are just so excited to have it.
And we truly believe that it is going to make an impact. I mean, for us, it's meaningful as teachers, but I think we also very much believe that it's going to be very meaningful and helpful for the students.
It's a fabulous donation and just, you know, copious thanks to the Warden family for bringing this to us. Is this a curriculum that we currently deploy? Is there professional development around this?
You're looking at them.
Yeah, go ahead. We were able to, just before the school year got out, lead a series of two days across the schools for all the kindergarten teachers. So they have been exposed and trained in that way. We are also planning to meet with them. We're building it into our schedule next year to have monthly meetings with grade-level teams to discuss, you know, what are the pros and cons, what are some things we might still need support around so that the rollout goes smoothly for them. We're currently brainstorming ways to also bring first grade into that training as well so that they feel comfortable and ready to try and start that next year.
The reality is because of the timing of the donation, we're kind of doing first grade more quickly. So realistically, we're looking at a fall rollout so that it might not hit September, but we're looking at an October, November rollout because it's really important, and Jackie and Ann are so cognizant of making sure that it's rolled out in a way that teachers don't feel it's an add-on, it's a supported. So we would rather go slowly and get it right than just get it in teachers' hands without the support. So given that this is happening so late in this academic year, it'll probably be first grade kind of October, November.
But we are very excited.
We're thrilled.
Very thankful.
Yeah.
Could I ask, I know so many materials at this young age are consumable, that the kids take them, they use them, they're gone. Is that the case with these materials, or will they be in use for many years from this one donation?
They will be in use for many years. That's the great part about foundations. They have magnetic boards, and those last over many years. So it's something that the kids will be able to use year after year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Treasi.
Great donation, obviously, by Anita and James Warden. Two fantastic people. I'm just kind of curious, how were they, were they solicited to make this donation, or how did it come about, I guess? Because there's a lot of generous people in town, obviously, that if they knew about these type programs, they'd be probably interested in doing it.
So I can answer that question. So Anita responded to my school, my newsletter in the month, my June newsletter, and said, "I'd really like to talk to you about reading." And I was over at the Kittredge third-grade community event, and we had a conversation, and she said, "Well, what would you do?" And I said, "Really struggling to get foundations into first grade." And so they were not solicited. She came to me.
Oh, that's great. Fabulous.
And I will also say, just to talk about their generosity, I wrote her and said, you know, "This is how much it would cost for the whole district with 16 schools," and didn't even ask, and she said, "We'll do it."
That's great.
So it was really her passion for early literacy coupled with a chance encounter and my knowledge that these guys of their plan for the district.
I'm not surprised. I know Anita and James very well, and you're an incredible company here in the Merrimack Valley, Selectory of Renewables, so I am very glad she reached out to you to make that donation.
Yeah.
Very good.
So, I mean, just super quickly, I mean, the Wardens are incredibly generous and very, very supportive of all of our schools. So, I mean, this is absolutely fantastic, and I thank them both. What I think is amazing is two of my children struggle very much in reading, and I know how hard those teachers worked in order to get them to where they are today, and they still, you know, one of them still struggles a little bit. So the fact that we've got materials that will be there, not just for one year, but for multiple years, I think is fantastic, and I'll be really curious to see, perhaps at the end of next year, maybe the impact that it's had. And maybe it's too quick to kind of do.
No, we are confident we're going to be able to show that.
I mean, I think that that's a fantastic thing, and a massive thank you to the Warden family for this.
Absolutely.
We'd love to see that. Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming this evening to tell us.
We're thrilled to be here. This is such an exciting movement forward in literacy, so we're just thrilled about it.
Great.
Thank you.
So without further comment, entertain a motion to accept the donation, the amount of $16,906 to be applied for funding materials of the Wilson Foundation Comprehensive Reading Program as presented. Second, any other discussion? I think that we, as the school committee, certainly owe the Wardens a thank you letter from us. This is more than one would expect. So again, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No abstentions? Again, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the fun stuff. Chair report. Three quick items. First, I just want to report out that the town manager's shared legal counsel search is closed, I believe on the 10th, if I recall. Is that right, Mr. Treasi?
Yep, last Friday.
And at this point?
Well, it closed, it closed last Friday.
Last Friday, okay. And at this point?
Wednesday.
Okay, that's right. And at this point, there are over 20, I think there's 21 or 22 candidates that are under-revealed.
That's correct.
I've been able to look at a few of them. I think Mr. Treasi and I need to spend some time together and individually to deep dive into these, but some extremely promising candidates in there as well, so we'll be able to report out as that process continues. The other comment I was going to make this evening is, in executive session, we, as a committee, voted to accept and approve a letter of agreement between the school committee and the North Andover Professional Support Association. This is essentially to create a new job position or a new job definition of behavioral technician. And Dr. Rice, would you want to add some insight?
Yeah, this is a position that will support elementary school students who are on the spectrum. Currently, we have a program at Franklin Elementary School, and the idea is to ensure that these kids are included in their home elementary schools through the support of a BT. So working very collaboratively with the union, working with both Leanne Carbone and Dr. Straight, our new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to come up with a vision. This is a direct result of the recommendations that Dorsey Early gave us as part of her overview. So I'm very excited that the union was willing to do an MOA to support this and not, so we can move forward on trying to get as many students included in their home schools as possible.
This is going to be a phase-in?
Phase-in program, yeah. So we're excited about that.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last item I wanted to bring up is a working group for a single-study-coordinated spring vacation. I'll yield time. Mr. Lippert would like to walk us through this.
I just received these two attachments yesterday. Several school districts are trying to encourage the Mass Association of School Committees to form a study committee to look at one week's vacation in the spring rather than two. And their thought on that is sort of like the start time issue. Everybody's got to do it at the same time. Can't be just one or two districts trying to do this. So they're trying to encourage the MSC to take this on as a larger study to see what people think. And to do that, it's helpful if districts encourage them by offering individual resolutions to get them to take this on as a study activity. So several districts have already submitted these resolutions, and I'm suggesting that it, you know, doesn't cost anything, we don't have to do anything, there's no activity for us, it's just to encourage them to do that. And if the sense of the committee is that we would like to submit that, it could be as simple as what's on this piece of paper. It's nothing real complicated. Apparently, they need to have these by the first of July to get onto their agenda for their November annual conference where this would all be debated and voted on. So that's why I kind of hurried up to get it to us so we could think about it tonight if we think this is a good thing to do. And, you know, certainly, I don't see how this can hurt to study the issue, and we've, there's been some discussion about this already, so.
Very good. Basically, I'll leave it to the committee to determine if there's a motion to adopt this and present this in our name for review.
Mr. Lippert, I know you mentioned the early start times. Obviously, there have been some school districts that have already gone forward with, I mean, later start times, I apologize. Are you suggesting that this would only take place if all the?
This would only, this is really a resolution to get them to do a study. Doesn't influence.
Do they, do you know what, I mean, I guess I'd like to know what our own district feels about. I'm sure we've had a lot of mixed feelings, but it sounds like when you guys, this committee undertook the later start time study internally.
Yes.
You know, you did that just for North Andover.
We had talked about, sort of in parallel with that, we had talked about merging vacations.
Right.
Yes. When we went through the discussion of eliminating religious holidays, so we went through that at that time, separate from the start time discussion.
This is just about.
Just about.
Just vacation.
Just vacation, there's nothing to do with it.
Just about vacation.
So what was your feedback on this issue? I think it was five, six years ago.
Yeah, we, it was, for all the reasons listed in here, it was deemed too complicated for us to take it on individually. We couldn't do it by ourselves.
So if people were interested in it, should it be possible to be sorted?
Yes, so if it was done on a regional basis or statewide, then it would be possible. So that's, I think, what this study could point us toward is what the overall feeling of many districts in the Commonwealth might be to see if many people would want to go to a single spring vacation week. And if not, then we'd just stick with what we've got.
I think I missed what you said. Was there any general or majority view on, if it was possible, would our parents at that time, five, six years ago, be in favor of going to one week in March? I assume that's what it was.
Right. My recollection is that at that time, there was not a strong sentiment to go to a single week.
But we can certainly bring the questionnaire results back.
Yes.
But I agree with you.
We can do that.
Or do a new questionnaire. It's sort of dated.
Or do a new questionnaire, yeah. And, you know, that was as a result of the, you know, having excessive snow days and, you know, a late completion of the school year and all of that. So that was how we really got going down that track, so.
One thing that I want to point out, which isn't necessarily in here, which, you know, there's obviously when, if one district goes it alone, you know, there's issues with, you know, date camps and things, places like the Y run and parents who may live outside of an individual district. But the one thing that came out in the study, which I never anticipated, was for many of our families where their parents are divorced, part of the divorce agreement is actually mom has February, dad has April, or vice versa. And so that was a very interesting perspective when I started to read some of the survey results. So if you are there and you're part of that conversation, I would be curious if other districts have found the same.
Hopefully, those issues would be part of a study that they could do.
Right.
That would, that's, you know, that plus for us being here in the Merrimack Valley, we have, you know, many teachers that live in New Hampshire. So then we have that perennial vacation issue, right? Where theirs is always the one we've offset to ours. How does that influence things? How would that make it more difficult? So I think this is an opportunity for one organization to put together, who kind of compile all that, do some surveys, see what the general consensus is and see if it's worth moving forward on this. And if not, that's okay too.
And if our public stays, we might get some student input.
One less vacation.
I don't think we should let graduates comment.
So you're saying that should we want to do this, that it would be the Mass Association, school committees would come up with a questionnaire that we would all use?
Correct.
We would have to draft our own.
They would do the survey, they would do the questionnaires.
And provide the results.
So what I'd be looking for is a motion to have the school committee enter into a resolution to MASC to do the study.
Which only is to do the study.
That's all that I'm, that's being asked.
That's correct.
Non-binding, so.
Non-binding, right.
So is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to ask MASC to help us? A non-binding evaluation tool to at least help us drive our decision?
I don't think so. Remember, we pay dues.
Yep.
Why not?
And I understand the urgency of getting this in before the 1st of July, which means we probably have to draft the resolution to get it to them.
We're just going to cut and paste this then?
Yeah, that's, yeah. This is the, I think this is the cut and pasted version.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of a resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Lippert, for bringing this forward tonight. I think that's it for the chair report. Over to the superintendent report.
Yeah, I mean, it's been an active few weeks. I appreciate graduation. I thought it was a beautiful evening and I was especially impressed by Sorab and Rory and their speeches. I thought they did an amazing job. And Rory actually happens to be in the audience, so excellent job. And tomorrow at noon at BU, our girls lacrosse team is playing for the state.
Saturday.
Saturday. I'm hoping it's Friday. I knew it was Saturday. Maybe I'm just hoping it's Friday. So Saturday at noon at BU, our girls lacrosse team will be playing against Westwood for the state title. The game lasts a few days ago against Franklin was a fantastic game, really fun. Girls got down 2-0 right off the bat and came back and really dominated and won the game. It was a really fabulous game. I think the final score was eight to four. Their defense was incredible and the goalie had heck the game. So really wonderful that they've gotten as far as they have for the last three years. They've won the North Sectional but haven't been able to make it to the state finals and this is a real accomplishment, so. Anyone's watching and wants to go to the game? Noon at BU.
There you go.
There you go.
And that's it.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our old business, we have a second reading of the annual health policies. I think we got a very good update and a good presentation at last meeting. So I'll ask for a motion to accept the health policies as presented.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Now, any discussion, any changes?
It's not broadcasted, so.
Do you, you can now, go to the link.
Oh, perfect.
No, it's the link for, that was the link for number four.
All right, okay, they're here. Everyone has them. If you come over and try to read them.
They're exactly as they were last week.
Yeah.
No change.
No changes, no comments or were there any concerns?
Nope.
Hearing none? All in favor of accepting the health, I'm sorry, the review of health policies as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No abstentions? Thank you very much. We also have a second reading of the appointment of Dr. Chang as our school physician. This also was presented, although unfortunately, Dr. Chang was not able to join us. So I'll take a motion to accept Dr. Chang as our school physician consultant for FY or school year '17 at a cost of $6,300.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No abstentions? Thank you. And then finally?
The slow need to be open.
Yeah, we want to take a look at this. So the next item up is the North Andover High School overnight trips for 2016-2017. And yes, there are quite a few of them. I know Dr. Scuzzarello was here last time. Again, we, I thought, went through some thoughtful discussion. So I'd first like to start by asking for a motion to accept the, well, let me ask, do we want to take them all as a block or do you want to take them?
I would take them all as a block.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had some questions for a call correctly on the Washington DC trip last time. I thought we may get a little.
Things about Dr. Strate?
Yeah, just about the timing of that trip.
So do we want to pull that one out and motion the others accept for that or?
That would be my question.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept all but the Washington DC trip, which we'll take as a separate motion as presented?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Great. So any discussion on everything except for the Washington DC trip? These are a few new ones. A few of these are a little pricey, but I think we heard good justification and robust fundraising in plan.
And the logistics.
And logistics are standardized and just as we always ask for it.
I talked to the interim principal today and said, "You might want to be going to LA." So she's sort of interested. With 220 kids, I said, "I think you might want to go with her." So I think Ms. Holman's thinking about getting her tickets to LA.
Did you tell LA or did you tell LA and 220 kids?
I told her 220 kids, but, you know, she is a high school principal and is actually excited about the 220 kids.
But it's the band and the chorus, right?
Yeah, so, you know.
It's all good.
So she was excited.
Okay. Any other comments on everything except for the DC trip? Great. All in motion, all in favor of accepting the trips as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No abstentions? Great. Now I'd like to take a motion to take the DC trip onto the matter.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, so do we have any update on the trip being during?
So I mean, the one thing that you were concerned about, Mr. Treese, I just want to be clear, was that it was in the middle of the week? Is that what you were concerned about? And it was so short?
Well, yeah, that's what, I mean, I don't know if the principal is going to be able to answer this question and maybe, you know, first of all, the timing is not till, this doesn't seem to be an urgent one anyway.
Correct.
I mean, the other ones seem like you need to plan well in advance. These folks are just going down in DC. It's, I think it's a Tuesday. We go on a Tuesday, come back on a Thursday. I love DC. I spent time down there. I think it's a great trip they should do. I question whether they can bang it all out and drive back and forth in that timeframe.
So what if, when we reconvene in September, I asked the chaperones to come and explain it?
I would love that.
Perfect. I just think this time of year was tough to do that.
Right.
I agree, it's March.
But if this is not time-sensitive, I would maybe...
That would be fine. Happy to do that.
But this table is still...
I think the question would be, you know, like, if they added on, you know, would they add on one more day, you know?
Yep.
And why are they going that, I mean, again, they're going, obviously, they're going to miss three days of school. And I'm guessing if they're driving that much, there's going to be luggage on that Friday as well.
And I think, I do know that, I do believe that a lot of the middle-of-the-week issues is because of the tours and doing the tours in the middle of the week.
Sure.
So that's the issue for the middle of the week, but in terms of amount of time.
Yeah, maybe we can get some answers just.
Yeah, but I would happily have them come at our first meeting in September.
It's such a great city, so I mean...
Yep.
Well, Mr. Treese, are you interested in seeing?
You know something? You know, if they're going to LA, maybe I'll take the Southwest.
It seemed to me that...
Take the Southwest.
It's the question that, gosh, should they be adding Friday?
Or find a good time. Obviously, they're kind of, they're missing a week of school and I don't know if there was something specific that was just to those specific dates. Or I understand, you know, if you were April, you know, the cherry blossoms get going and, you know, get some more crowded, but I think it's worth having a discussion because it'd be short-sighted to do it in just that short timeframe, in my opinion.
Okay, so to close the conversation, I'm not going to call for a vote on this. And instead, I'd ask that we put this on the calendar for our second or third meeting in September.
We'll do our first, I mean, if we can. I mean, if, as long as it's back. It also seems that there is a need of some chaperones. I think I heard Mr. Treese just say he was interested in going. I don't know if anyone else.
I'll see if I can get the hop pass.
He said he loves Washington.
Yeah, it seemed to me like he was on that charter bus for all those hours. Okay.
Great.
President's been sent.
Better than...
As long as that 220 kids down.
Okay, moving on, I'd like to go on to the 2016 Community Programs Revolving Account. I know Mr. Neely is not here. However, we did get a thorough discussion last time. This is that the program was successful and we need to approve the increase in the funding in order to pay the bills. So I take a motion to accept the recommended action of increasing the 2016 Community Programs Revolving Account to the amount of 24, I'm sorry, $224,969.59.
Still moved.
Second.
Great. Dr. Price, any update or any other concerns?
None.
Anything from the committee on?
Working.
Okay. Without any further comment, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? None, no abstentions? Moving on. That brings us to our new business. Our new business first item is on the first reading of a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. And I would take two motions. One is to suspend the rules so that we can vote this this evening. And then the second would be to actually approve the policy.
So do you want me to give you a little background on this? Is that helpful? Before you either, so as I think you know, North Andover is going forward to become a green community and there are a number of parts of that. I think much of that was explained at town meeting or at least has been discussed. One thing is that we need to adopt for all vehicles owned by the town a fuel-efficient vehicle use policy. The Board of Selectmen voted this at their last meeting. The school committee has very limited vehicles. This really is two.
I was going to ask what they are.
So we have the truck, which is the moving truck, and then we have another truck, the custodian. And I think the Vespa works, but, you know.
That one qualifies already.
So frankly, this is really not a big deal, but because there are some, there are two vehicles under us and it is not about changing, it's about if we, if we...
Purchase.
Purchase another one, we try to stay within. This is kind of a good faith effort to have fuel-efficient and environmentally thoughtful vehicles. So I don't see this as a big deal for the school committee, but I also know that it is a big deal for the town and I, that is why I asked to suspend the rules and just get this done so that we are in line with the Board of Selectmen. And since we don't meet again until September, I wanted to try to get this done before we convene.
Is there a deadline for this to accept?
I don't know if there's a deadline, like if we don't vote it, if it's a huge problem, but I do know that this Board of Selectmen voted it last time and we're trying to be in line with them.
The impression that I had was there was some deadline.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know exactly when it was. But given that this is, that we are a small part of this, that was why I suggested.
Does this mean we have to buy two new vehicles?
No, 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 no. If we replace, we need to do this. But you can see that there's a lot of things that are not part of this and, yeah, so their exemptions, heavy-duty vehicles as defined above are exempt, so I think our truck would be considered a heavy-duty vehicle. So I think in general, this has minimal if no impact to the district, but we need to vote it to support.
So I would move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all favor of suspending the rules to vote this this evening, say aye.
Aye.
That sounds like 5-0 to me. The only, well, as we move forward, we would obviously need a policy named for this in order to get it in. I'm not sure where this would fit, but I'm sure we can approve the policy and find clerical work to get that.
When Deb gets back.
Yes.
It's probably already in there, right?
One more day.
And the brains of the operators.
One more day without Ms. Segari, having a hard time.
Any other discussion on the policy? This does look like it's best effort.
That's what it is.
And I don't see anything that can bite us later. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of accepting the fuel-efficient vehicle use policy as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No abstentions? Bye-bye, thank you. Moving along. We have, under new business, the discussion and the vote of the school department principals and district-wide contracts. Now, Dr. Price, you want to take us a little bit through this?
Yes, so, just so that we're very clear here, terms and conditions of non-aligned, meaning non-union contracts, come before the school committee, and the school committee votes on the terms and conditions. The superintendent then is the one who actually makes the decisions around all those contracts. So, given that, what, and we obviously can't talk about individuals in public session, so what I am proposing is the following, is that you authorize a 2% in the aggregate increase for the non-aligned, that no one person would exceed a 5%, and that that total amount is $56,682 that was previously budgeted during our FY '17 conversations, and then to be divided among the 30 principals and other non-district employee, district-wide employees, non-aligned district-wide employees, as determined by me. And so, that is my request of you in an effort to make sure that we are being in line with the appropriate approach for school committee influence and superintendent work with all of the non-aligned.
Okay, so, I take a motion to accept that, so we have a discussion on it?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, so now, discussion? Well, I'll start, I think, this, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think it's been pretty well explained to us that, you know, what the superintendent's doing here, and she's taken a really comprehensive look at this, and I think it's a fair process that she's gone through, looking at all these contracts that are non-union, so happy to support it.
Yeah, I just echo the same. I think, you know, taking a holistic view, ensuring there's equity for, as people come to the organization, they know what to expect. And I think that this, this is how we do it in the commercial industry, so I think it's rational.
And I certainly appreciate, Dr. Price, that this is the first time we've had it all together in one place at one time, so that's a big help for us. We've never seen it all, you know, so we could look at the whole picture, so that's been a big help too, so thank you.
And honestly, when this first came up as a topic, I think we were cautiously optimistic we'd be able to get to this point, and I just want to, again, call out your Herculean effort with this, Mealy and others, to get to this, to get to this point. I think this is rational, and it gives us the oversight, and it gives you the ability to supervise and appropriately manage people.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the recommendation as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No abstentions?
Oh, no.
Thank you very much.
I want to get this back from the...
Yeah.
So, the next item under new business is a brief discussion of the superintendent's contract. And what I want to do is indicate that we have met with the superintendent, and we've met separately as a committee. And at the superintendent's recommendation, the school committee has essentially decided that we will keep the salary as is in the first contract year. Many of the reasons for this include the fact that we are very lean right now, and, you know, that was, that was a decision that I think was unanimous between the committee and the superintendent, and that the other topic that came up was the summer hours at the district office would basically be consistent for all, all central office employees, so that it gives some flexibility, but some consistency in ensuring that we have good supervision for the district, but also some flexibility in the summertime. Dr. Price, did you have any other comments, or?
No, I love being here, so I'm excited to come back for year two.
We're very happy to have you and looking for more than just two.
Me too.
So, there's no motion on this, just this is an informational update.
Right.
So, the next item under new business is the last order that I can call, and this essentially is the reorganization of the North Andover School Committee. And in accordance with our policy, the school committee at its last scheduled meeting, which is tonight, will elect from its membership a new chair, or a chair and a vice chair, and a clerk, all of whom will hold their respective offices for the next year. And the way this is done is, a majority needs to be here, we've got that taken care of. And I will relinquish the gavel to our most senior school committee member, who will walk us through the rest of the process. So, Mr. Limpert?
Which would be me.
That would be you.
And we would, and I would entertain a motion for a nomination for chair.
Mr. Limpert, I'd like to nominate, I'll give it to Tracy for chair.
I'll give it to you.
I'm sorry.
Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Limpert.
Other nominations?
Nope, I'm good with those two.
So, shall we vote?
Give the chair.
Let me, let me vote in seniority, Mr. Gross.
So, are we voting for a person, or are we saying?
A person.
A person, Mr. Limpert.
Mr. Limpert.
Mr. Tracy.
Mr. Tracy.
I vote for Mr. Tracy.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Not going to throw it.
Hand it to Hammer.
There you go.
I guess that's my first order of business. First of all, thank you for your vote of conference, I really appreciate that. We will now elect a vice chairperson. I'll take nominations from the floor.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mr. Limpert for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none of closed nominations, we'll take a roll call on vice chair.
I vote for Mr. Limpert.
Yes.